Good evening. This time I'd like to call to order the zoning commission meeting of October 8, 2008. Let the record show that we only have one new member not present at this time, which we will swear him in at the next meeting. Public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward, comment on any item not on the agenda, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment from the public? I would like to ask Mr. Ricky Compton, our planning director, to make an introduction, please, of parish staff.
Mr. Ben Laurie. He started last week. He's our new parish engineer, taking over for Chris Hewing. We're starting him slow. He's starting with some drainage review studies. But basically, we're going to roll him in, use him with our ERA until that contract expires, and then decide if we need to extend it on a month-to-month basis, or we just throw Ben to the fire. But basically, he's an LSU graduate. He's got his PE. He worked in the state of New York for two years, and he's been working in Washington State for an additional four. So I'd like to welcome Ben home to Louisiana.
Thank you, Ricky, and welcome, Ben.
Welcome.
I also worked two years in Louisiana.
I was just being a wise guy.
Okay, public comment period is closed. This time I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the August 13 meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Julio Dumas, seconded by Michael Marshawn. Any opposition? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider the MU2 zoning designation. And I think everybody in their packet has the information that was handed out. I think we introduced this at one of the prior meetings. I can't remember which one. Ricky, help me out here. But Ricky, why don't you just, if you wouldn't mind, do a little further explanation one more time on this additional...
This basically came out, I think it was probably three or four meetings ago, when we had two or three parcels of land backed up to property on Airline Highway. They were coming in for a rezone, and there was some contemplation about whether or not mixed-use zoning was the appropriate zoning category for that area. Lance Brock and I went through the maps, and we came to a realization that if we just created a new zoning category, we call it MU2, and we'll remove those land uses from the mixed-use category that we don't think fit in these other locations. And these locations specifically today are properties that back up to properties that front on Airline Highway, and front on Jefferson Highway, and properties within the post office square area where we did see a rezoning happen a few months ago. But essentially, what we've done is we've created an MU2 category with more of your small office, small commercial, and residential uses, none of your big boxes, and we've created some standards that will help ensure that we get the size and the uses that we're looking for.
Commissioners, any questions?
So you're just talking about lighter commercial, more professional uses, and so forth?
Right. You know, we had a use in Florida that we called community commercial, and it was sort of those small residential-scale commercial uses, small business parks that maybe even look like townhouses, or sort of have that classic character. But what we're trying to do is create a zoning category in a place where today their only option is to come in with mixed use, or their only option, you know, is to put forth a zoning category that we don't think necessarily fits. And I think as we move forward through the master planning process, we'll probably find that we need to create a couple more zoning categories, and we may need to look at the whole parish and say, you know, this shouldn't be mixed use, this should be MU2, or this shouldn't be community commercial, it should be whatever. So this is just the first step, and I think that this will serve the parish to a great extent where we just don't need mixed use everywhere.
Okay, any other questions this time? Seeing none, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward. You have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Okay, any other questions and comments by the commissioners?
Just for a point of clarification, this map will also accompany... If the commission recommends to send this to the council, this map that we have will accompany the ordinance, and the council would vote on the ordinance and the map at the same time.
Correct.
So it's not just an ordinance we're voting on, we're also voting on...
Rzoning.
Correct.
To the new classification.
Rzoning these properties.
That would benefit those... It's probably four or five now that we've come in for rezones. That would allow them to just move forward without having to come back.
Correct, yeah, which they all were willing to take that chance, and I think we appreciate their understanding and patience while we try and do this, yeah.
Well, I certainly think it's better because it does give us an option against some of the spot zoning issues that tend to come up before us. So if you're looking a motion for an approval to send a recommendation to the parish council, I'll make that motion to send the ordinance and the attached map.
The map must accompany the ordinance, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's a package deal. It's a package deal. So I'll make the motion to send that to the parish council with a recommendation to approve.
Okay, motion by Michael Marshawn to recommend to the council the addition of the additional zoning classification and the attached map. And I think Sherry Slimon seconded. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right, item number seven, site plan review. 7A zoning review ID 1930.08, Bronco Fabrication.
Alan, I believe you may have skipped one, item six?
I need my glasses. Yes, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
To amend the... Item number six, to amend the Ascension Parish Development Code, Section 17 through 112, map of the zoning district, add overlay zones to it. Mr. Parenton.
What we're doing is just adding a sentence to Section C of the ordinance to clarify and codify Lance's interpretation of that ordinance. There's some discrepancy as to what it really... Whether it means what Lance has interpreted to mean. We've run into that situation, and all we want to do is add that one sentence and submit it to the parish council for their approval.
Where's the sentence at, O'Neill?
It's Part C. It says, "Dealing with the 51% rule," and it says, "If a parcel or tract of land whose zoning is affected by this provision is subdivided, each individual tract, parcel, or lot of land created by the subdivision of the original tract shall be governed by the zoning in which the newly-created tract, parcel, or lot is located." It's to clarify an issue that we needed to... We think we need to resolve that issue, and it's just a clarification of what happens. So if your property is affected by the 51% rule, and you subdivide it, the new lots are in a zoning division of where they all, when they're finished.
All right, let me give you, for instance, I've got a parcel of land, and it's 50% commercial, 50% residential. So I cut off a piece of the residential, right?
Right.
So now I'm 51% commercial.
Right.
I'm commercial?
Right.
Okay?
That's what the intent of the ordinance is. That's how the ordinance has been interpreted in the past, and now we're just trying to clarify that.
Is that the best interpretation? I mean, you think...
Well, that's the best way to solve the problem. That's the only way to solve the problem. The ordinance, as it reads, is confusing.
It is confusing.
So that's why we're attempting to clarify that. We're trying to codify Lance's interpretations, is what we're doing.
We've had a lot of discussions over the last two weeks after the last Board of Adjustment meeting, and for me, once again, we're talking about 12 months in the future here is when we perform this master plan for the parish, it's my intent to look at the zoning of the whole parish and eliminate any tract that is divided by a zoning designation. We've had enough time, we've had enough history with our zoning. We can look at the map, and we can move the lines to parcel edges rather than the middle of parcels.
Okay.
But until we do that, we need some... We need to...
No, I wholeheartedly agree. I just wanted to get it in here, clear. That's all. Okay. Now, we need a public hearing tonight, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Okay, at this time I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward, public hearing is closed. Any additional comments, questions by commissioners?
Well, I just want to thank staff for jumping on it and clarifying it because at the Board of Adjustment, it was rather interesting, and I want to make a motion to recommend approval of the amendment to the code.
Have a motion to recommend approval by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Sherry Slimon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, now, now item 7A. Site plan review, zoning review ID 1930.08 for Bronco Fabrication.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joe Wiley. I'm here representing Bronco Fabrication. We submitted a few weeks ago to Mr. Brock a proposed structure for construction at 18154 Swamp Road, which is where the Bronco Fabrication shop is located. This structure would be approximately 1,800 square feet of office space, joined with about 9,500 square feet of warehouse. The purpose of the new structure is twofold. One is to allow for the removal of a temporary office building that's at the site so that the ladies and gentlemen in that building can now be housed in the permanent structure for office space, and also to take quite a bit of the items that are now stored in exterior mode and underneath one of the... There's a covered storage shed there that we want to move all of the items that are stored outside, that can be stored inside, into this larger warehouse building. We've submitted to you architectural plans, landscape plan, a site plan. We feel that all of that meets or exceeds the requirements for business park development standards that set forth in your ordinance, and we're here to ask you to approve the building for construction. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. I have with me tonight one of our consultants, Mike Montoya, and the general contractor represented by Brad Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. I guess the first question, we would have to ask why it's taken you so long to come forward with this drawing? I think about a year and a half ago, you came before us and you said that, you know, you want 18 months to have a new structure in place and have all of the temporary structures gone, and then...
Right.
Then all the facilities in the new structure, and that's our main concern.
Well, actually, it was... I think it was about a little less than a year and a half ago, and then we had to wait to get our beneficial occupancy also, you know, in terms of getting that trailer moved in and getting it all set up and approved. Could it have been done in a shorter time, probably? But, you know, we did have the normal items attendant to construction. We had to do a wetland study. We had some environmental concerns, building next to a stream. Some of those studies and approvals had to be obtained. Design effort, qualifying for loans, all those processes, they take a while. I mean, could it have been done in 12 months as opposed to 14 or 15? Maybe, but we just did it as quick as we could.
And I guess I remember you making the commitment at that time that, yes, we will have it done in 18 months, so... And that is my biggest concern is, you know, you stood before us and assured us that you would, and here we are, almost to that end of that time period, and this, now we're finally seeing something, two months away from that deadline expiring, so...
Right.
I'll let some of the other commissioners ask some questions, too.
All the more reason we need to hastily approve the submittal so we can get started construction.
Right, well, any other questions by commissioners at this time?
I guess my biggest concern is that you promised us that you would have this done. I saw the tape, I went back and looked at it, and you guaranteed us it would be taken care of.
Okay.
And here we are, two months away from your certificate of occupancy, which was issued to you on June 12 of '07. So you've had all this time, and you were also told then, very strongly, I thought, "Don't come back and ask for an extension." And you said, "I made a contract with the parish, and I'm going to stick to it." What have you done? So how... I guess if we give you an extension...
Ms. Becknell, I just answered the question about the delay. Okay? I'm not going to answer any more questions about the delay. I've answered the question once. We did the best we could.
How do I know you can keep your word?
We did the best we could.
Mr. Wiley, you said you had to go get a wetlands permit, you had to go to the Army Corps?
Yes. We had to do the wetland study. We didn't have to get a permit. We didn't have the 404 permit, but we did have to do the study.
You got them to sign off on it?
Yes.
In a year?
Yes. Takes a little while.
Putting some tennis shoes on, quite frankly.
That's football.
Yeah. Okay. How much time... I mean, how long's it going to take you to build this thing?
We think that we can have it... As soon as we get approval, we're going to start. The site's been basically prepared. We haven't started any actual construction, you know, in terms of the facility itself.
Nothing that requires a permit.
But we think in about five months, we should be finished.
You've got the plans? You're pretty much ready to go?
Yes, sir, we do have a plan. Ready to go. The drainage study, I'm not sure right now if that's been approved, but other than that, everything else is, as far as I know, is ready.
So conceivably, this trailer is supposed to be gone by end of February of '09, correct?
No, trailer's supposed to be gone by December 12 of this year.
December 12 of '08.
Of '08.
Can I get February from it? Somebody knows my math must be... Okay. So by December, you're supposed to be out of there. So two months from now, you're supposed to be out of there. So what you're looking at is you're looking at a three-month extension.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Wiley, what's your plan on erosion control over there where y'all knocked down all the trees? What are y'all going to do over there?
I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Montoya to come up. He's the consultant that handled all the site development. He'll address that for you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Montoya with Compliance Consultants, representing Bronco Fabrication as their civil and environmental engineers. A stormwater pollution prevention plan has been prepared. Proper control measures were designed to be in place prior to, throughout, and throughout construction. Now, as far as any tree removal, I can't really comment on, but I can certainly tell you that notice of intent will be forwarded to the Department of Environmental Quality and, well, and along with the stormwater and pollution prevention plan.
Now, the trees were already removed, so all there is out there now is just dirt. Well, there's a big pile of tree debris, but there's a lot of dirt, and I'm concerned about that going into the, what we call a slough. Y'all called it a creek?
Oh, yes, Slough Creek.
Okay, but I'm concerned about the erosion going in there and filling it up and causing drainage problems.
Okay. Well, the stormwater plan that my firm has prepared for Bronco Fabrication will address issues around the construction of this structure. Now, it's, you know, I'm not aware of any tree removal. I'm not saying it has or hasn't been done, but, you know, the plan that we prepared is centered around the construction of the building itself.
But that really doesn't have anything to do with what's there now. And my question would be, what's going to happen now? Y'all knocked down all those trees, and there's an issue now, I think.
Okay, well, things you might address is if the drainage is actually designed to go the other direction away from the creek, you might tell her about the storm surface drainage.
Okay, well...
Catch basins are, and how that's working.
I think her question is pertaining to some trees that apparently got removed. I mean, I would say that we would just implement the stormwater controls immediately to address that. I mean, like I said, it was... The stormwater controls were designed for the construction of the building. I'd say if trees got removed, then we put those in place immediately.
And would that happen whether you get your building built or not? Because that needs to happen either way.
Sure. Two points, if I could briefly respond. The erosion issue during construction is a matter for the general contractor to take care of, and, you know, there's all kinds of ways that they could do that in temporary measures. Ultimately, it's going to be grasped, and that will be the surface erosion control. If we see that we have some erosion problems developing post-construction, then we'll address those in whatever way is, you know, necessary to take care of. The point that I was trying to make with Mr. Montoya is when construction's complete, when it's finally graded, the actual... The predominant flow of surface water off of that site is actually away from the creek toward the fenced facility. And there's going to be subsurface drainage running alongside what would be the northern part of the building, along where the adjacent... The fence is now, and there's two or three catch basins, and then it brings the water out to Swamp Road, then south to the creek, and then, you know, then it'll flow into the creek. But the predominant surface drainage post-construction is going to be away from the creek, not toward it.
Okay.
Now, will that mean there'll be some surface runoff toward the creek? Absolutely. And we'll plant vegetation and do whatever erosion control measures are necessary. We don't think that it's going to be steep enough, that it's going to be a significant problem if we find out it is, and we'll address that.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions at this time?
In the short term, though, I'd like to put a silt fence along that tree from Long Swamp Road that's stopped up. In the short term...
That's a good idea.
Any additional comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Public hearing.
I don't know. Do we do... Do we have it? Just as a plan review, do we do...
It's a plan review. I think, given the fact that, you know, he's had to go through the Army Corps, we've had a couple of weather incidents and what have you, and he's only looking for 90 days, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of an extension through March 30 of 2009. That gives him the 90 days that he needs to get this thing done.
I'm going to offer a substitute motion to approve the site plan as submitted, but I'm not going to go along with the extension because the extension was just for the double-wide trailer.
Correct.
So...
Stop it. You're kicking him out on the street, aren't you?
No, we're not kicking anybody out on the street. I'm approving his site plan. He can go ahead and get started, but I'm not comfortable with the extension.
Well, let me just say this to you. From a practical perspective, whether you grant him the extension or not, by the time we start processing, the noticing for violation, and go through all the added expense of getting everybody lined up to kick him out of that trailer, the 90 days have come and gone. So you might as well acknowledge it and save the expense and the aggravation for staff.
Well, in the... I watched the video today, and Mr. Wiley said it really wasn't an issue. They could just move their people over to their other facility.
Is this issue... We're talking about the site plan review, are we also addressing an extension?
He's asking for both.
He's asking for both.
Well, the extension was not requested in the application. The extension was requested here this evening.
I'm sorry?
Ah, the extension was not requested in the application. The extension was requested here this evening.
That's true.
Okay, well, in that case, you know what? I'm taking the motion to approve the site plan.
We didn't ask for an extension.
Okay.
Yeah, he's...
I'm taking the motion to approve the site plan.
All right, I have a motion by Michael Marshawn to approve the site plan, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Site plan review, zoning review ID 193108 for BJ Cuvion, Inc.
Excuse me, is this not a public or public comment?
Well, it's a site plan review. I mean, that's not a public comment, not a public hearing.
I'm Brent Cuvion with BJ Cuvion Incorporated, general contractors.
Yes.
Here to request approval for site plan review.
Hearing no questions, comments? What is the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion to approve as submitted.
A second.
Motion to approve by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Zoning review ID 1932.08, Mr. Cuvion?
Yes, sir. Once again, I'm representing BJ Cuvion.
You know, I got to tell you, buildings work off a lot alike. I hope they don't have any big Christmas parties here. They may not find their way out.
What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Steve Barrow, seconded by Beverly Barre. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Zoning review ID 193308, BJ Cuvion Incorporated.
Once again.
Staff, on this one, it looks like, you know, he's going to combine these two lots, and the structure's going to traverse the property line. Today...
Five and seven.
I mean, because what I'm looking at here, future building number two, 10,500 square feet. What is your... What is your estimated time? When are you looking at building here?
That actually, Mr. Lindstrom, who actually owns that property, okay? That actually, Mr. Lindstrom, who actually owns that property, okay, basically, he is looking to, you know, he's got the first, we have the first building going probably early, well, early to mid 2009. So, pretty good possibility we won't put that truck well in right now, we'll probably wait until that other building is in place.
Okay. Will these two buildings operate as one business or two separate businesses?
Two separate businesses.
Lance, just a point of clarification for me. Would they be required, when they get ready to build that building, would they be required to come back to see us?
You talking about Lot 7?
Lot 7?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Actually, Mr. Marshawn, that's one of the reasons why. It's shown there, there's a possibility that, you know, if we build 7, it may not, they may not need it, but we would like to have that opportunity if it is, you know, needed on 7.
Well, and I think you're doing it the right way, you know, by showing us, you know, giving us a heads up, hey, this is what we, you're planning, you know, you've got some options and you're planning for that, okay? And that's...
Thank you.
What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
A second.
Motion to approve by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you once again, Commissioner.
Thank you. Don't have this item shown on there, but I want to give Julio the opportunity to give his report for his committee, just kind of...
Well, we didn't have a meeting last month, and on our comp plan issue, just to bring up to speed, we were going to have a kickoff meeting with CPAC, and unfortunately, our uninvited guest, Mr. Gustaf, caused a disruption. And we also have a number of amendments that we, administration asked us to meet with them before we bring them here for a public hearing. We intend to have that done, along with a couple other amendments between now and the next meeting, so we can bring them to the full commission and have you guys look at them and hopefully recommend for a public hearing.
Thank you, Julio. Item number eight adjourned. Motion adjourned. We are adjourned.